All right, I'd like to call to order the Fridley Public School Board Business Meeting for Thursday, or excuse me, Tuesday, July 19th. We'll begin with a pledge of allegiance. All rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome. We'll begin the evening. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion by Lynn Blad, seconded by Sampson, to approve the agenda for July 19th, 2016. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the motion passes. Next on our agenda is beginning the spotlight on recognitions and the Transportation Administrator of the Year Award winner, I believe, Mr. Dennis Graff.
We've got the, we've got the present, she needs to get here.
Oh, she needs to get here. Okay, well, she hasn't snuck in yet. Okay, we'll wait for Cindy.
I think we're good, good to go here. Well, thank you. Good evening to everyone. We do have an exciting announcement for Cindy McKay, a staff member, and she has proven her worth as the transportation coordinator over and over again, and so it's with great pleasure, I'm going to introduce Mr. Derek Agate from Hopkins. He's the president of the MAPT organization, so without further ado, Derek.
It's my pleasure to be here to make this award, you know, for Cindy, and it's always an honor to recognize one of our administrator, and the award goes to administrator that's, that's been active in our industry for at least five years and have been a member and have contributed to the safety of pupil transportation. And Cindy has done that and was nominated by Dennis, and I just wanted to read the nomination letter, you know, that he wrote before I give the award to Cindy. I'm pleased to write this letter in support of Cindy McKay's nomination for the MAPT Annual Transportation Administrator of the Year Award. Cindy has worked for the Fridley Public Schools since 2012, first as a part-time transportation assistant, then taken the full-time position of transportation coordinator about six months later. Although Cindy came to us from a local bus company where she was working part-time, she has been involved in transportation, in the transportation industry for a major part of her working career. Since she arrived, she has worked hard, hand-in-hand with the contractors and get routes cleaned up and running efficiently, timing large amount, trimming large amounts of waste from the transportation budget. She has worked with the district staff involved with transportation to streamline requests and reporting. She now collects, collects reporting information from our, from our district for state, for the state of Minnesota, and has been instrumental in helping negotiate our contract with our busing contractors. Safety is always Cindy's priority. Once she goes, once she got settled in her position, she put together a bus evacuation program and schedule that ensured that everyone involved would be able to practice safe bus evacuation. She went from bus safety to making certain that our student walkers are getting to school safety under the guidance of train crossing guards. Working in cooperation with our district personnel, Cindy has made significant progress in updating the district's transportation website. She has brought a new look to the site and filled the site with useful educational information, making it an important one-stop information depot for parents, students, who are looking for transportation resources. Besides these few examples, of which there are many, Cindy is continually looking to make the district's transportation world a better place, whether it's with GIS, new cameras, safety seats, route exchanges, or district-wide coloring contests to raise bus safety awareness, Cindy is continually thinking of improving the way things are accomplished here. In addition, her current seat as a director-at-large with the MAPT allows her to keep our district up to date with the latest information on pupil transportation. I wanted to add, you know, that I've had the honor of working with Cindy for 14 years now. Three years ago, we decided to, and Cindy's been in charge of our poster contests for quite a few years, and is just an amazing advocate, you know, for that, you know, take pictures and is constantly, where is she? Come on up, Cindy, since I'm talking to you. And, you know, three years ago, we decided to, to take another leap with our poster contests and have a twins game, to, you know, take the winners to, for a twins game. Now, you can understand, we have jobs, and this is in addition to that. It was a major, major undertaking for that, but I cannot tell you the enormity of kids and parents that have benefited from that, you know, to just get recognized. And the twins organization themselves, you know, all the posters get put up on the Jumbotron, they have, you know, the, what do they call that, public safety announcement, and it goes all over the state. We've had national winners from our poster contests, and I have to tell you, if it wasn't for someone that has the passion and the love for transportation and, and put it all for the kids, you know, that would not be accomplished, and rightly so Cindy's so deserving of this award, and I'm so proud, you know, of her, and thank you very much for what you've given to us.
Thank you.
Well, I just want to take a couple words. I just really, I mean, I was just overwhelmed when I got this, as you can see from that picture. But I'd like to thank Dennis and Peggy for taking the time out to, to acknowledge my accomplishments, and it just, it's a huge, huge honor for me. I just, I mean, I know I, I just do what I do because I love what I do. Transportation of students and making sure they're safe and efficient the most is a passion, as everybody knows. My kids tell me that if I bleed, I bleed bus, so I just am so fortunate and blessed to be able to work at Fridley Public Schools and take my, my passion on and be able to carry it forward. The great staff here is so helpful and has really grasped onto my passion, so it helps a lot. I can say, nobody, there's not a lot of people in the world that can say, "I love to go to work every day." I love to go to work every day. I really do, and that's what this kind of a place it is. I would also like to thank my family, because they've put up with a lot, and also the, my family members at MAPT, they, whenever I have a question, I always reach out and call, and they've helped me build my career throughout my whole career, so this is like a true honor, and I'm, I'm just excited. It was really, like I said, I said, when I, when they opened the door, I go, "Huh, I never thought this would happen to me," so, so, thank you, thank you.
Well deserved.
Congratulations.
Thank you for what you do. And Derek, we do know about the bus poster contest. We get to see that all the time.
Thank you. No, we're gonna go this way.
Thank you.
Thank you. Future bus poster winner.
Right, next on our agenda is the facility and construction update. Mr. Hammer.
So tonight, we're gonna follow that up with a little bit of information and update on where we're at with construction projects around the district in our summer of 2016 construction district project that we have going on. We're touching every single building in some capacity this summer. See if I can get this thing to work. Here. I think so.
Didn't it?
Yeah, it's on. I'll let you run it. So again, I'm Matt Hammer, I'm the Director of Finance here at Fridley Public Schools, and our facility planning revolves around three principles, centering around the students, obviously. So we want to make sure that we're providing a safe and secure environment for student learning. We want to make sure we're protecting our investment in our infrastructure. The community's put money into this place, and we need to make sure we protect that investment. And we also want to make sure we're continuing to meet the ever-changing needs of our students, our staff, and our community. So on November 3rd, 2015, the Fridley Public School District was able to pass a bond referendum along with a renewal of an operating levy, and as part of that process, the, the mission was to make sure that we update safety and security systems, to make sure we update our fire suppression, and to make sure we update technology, deferred maintenance, and take care of the space issues mainly we were having at our elementary school. So, we're just gonna go through a few of those items that are going on right now in the summer of '16. This is a three-year phased-in process, so the first year, we have, we're touching every site. So the main work, we have a lot of work going on at the high school this summer, the high school is shut down. We have a small amount of work going, taking place at the middle school, and all the people that work here around are residing there this summer as well, and along with a small amount of work going on at FCC revolving around security, and then those two additions are going into the elementaries as well as a lot of deferred maintenance work going on at Hays. So this is just an illustration of some of those security projects we have taking place. On the left, you're looking at a cross corridor door that's going in at Hays. Both buildings, they're identical buildings, will see these security improvements in their front ends, the main entrances of the buildings. We're also updating safety and security cameras district-wide. Those camera systems will be updated this summer around the district. And also door hardware. Historically, our door hardware was old, it needed to be replaced so that it could lock on both sides instead of just from the outside. Fire sprinkling, the summer of '16 is, is a big year for that at the high school. That's, all the ceilings are out, and this work is going on. We've had to bring in fire mains, that's that picture on the, on the right, to sprinkle the rest of the building. We had a small amount of fire suppression in the back end of the high school, but the rest of the building is now going to be sprinkled per fire marshal order. We also, as we get into the further in presentation, you'll see that we have the middle school main, we were able to leverage and make that part of our high school project to make sure that when we get into Phase Two, 2017, that we'll have the water to the middle school so we don't have to break up the road on 61st two times. Updating technology. So, the left, that's a picture of our spaghetti weave of cable. District-wide, we're updating to CAT 6 cabling, and you can see, we removed the cable in our ceilings at the high school, and then as part of that process, we're putting CAT 6 back in, and that's the pictures on the right there. We also have an extensive amount of work going on with the network in the district and updating those systems. So, facilities on the deferred maintenance side, this is kind of where we were. So back in, prior to the referendum, these are some of the images that we were seeing. So standing water on the roofs, cracking fascia on those gym floor, and you'll see some of the progress that we've made there in some future slides, as well as windows and exterior walls that needed some repair. So when we're talking about protecting that infrastructure that we've invested in, that exterior envelope, as we move forward, these are some of the things that are going on. So that fascia's getting covered, we're updating the fascia around the high school. There's over a mile of that metal fascia work that's gonna go around to cover up and secure the, the fascia around our roofs at the high school. On the left, we have 100,000 square feet of roofing that's gonna get replaced over the next three years. 50,000 at our high school, that's equivalent about one football field. So we have two football fields that'll get replaced over the next three years, one football field alone at the high school this summer. Windows, windows are being replaced. Last year, prior to the referendum, we were able to replace windows at Stevenson Elementary. This summer, we're replacing windows at Hays Elementary. Those were original, so those buildings were built in the 60s, those windows are original and we're replacing them. At the high school, we're also updating our window systems, and we are currently, those are going into place as we speak. The elementary windows are on their way and will be going in soon. When we talk about our HVAC systems, for capacity purposes, we needed to include another chiller, that's the picture you see on the right, and the work that's going on in our kitchen at the high school required us to update our transformer, and that's that picture you see on the left. So we have, we're updating our electrical and HVAC systems around the high school and That looks like that's ready to serve food, doesn't it? That's our high school kitchen. It looks in a better shape than that as of today. The floors are back in and the walls are going back up, but that's where we were actually just two weeks ago. So, the plumbing and the electrical being updated, as well as a new look to that kitchen, which was all original, again, so the floor, the floors are being replaced, serving lines are being modified, all in an effort to improve our flow as we move forward with our school at the high school and our, that was interesting, in the cafeteria. So, gymnasium, that's been a project that's, that's a really cool project that's going on. The picture on the left is, is actually earlier this last year. The picture on the bottom right is the bleacher systems coming out, if we roll forward, Lori. The picture on the left is, the floor's out, bleachers are out, the old mastix been removed, and we're getting, getting that taken out of there and concrete brought in on the right. So this is the project that we've been working on over the last month, is determining whether our drain tiles functional, and as part of that bid process that we, when we accepted bids back in March and April, that we had a hold on determining whether the drain tile was still functional under our 50-year-old gym. We figured out that it wasn't functional, but we've been able to create, we've had some good findings in this process to be able to leverage the old drain tile from the standpoint of the main pipelines that come in, and we're able, we're gonna be able to create a passive water mitigation system instead of an active water mitigation system, which means we won't have the sumps, and we'll be able to flow that water out through our old drain tile pipe that we had, that was originally existence by putting in a pipeliner. So that's a real cool thing that's going on. The top there, you can see, the bleachers have been removed, there's a wall that's going in to expand that, not only instructional space but wrestling area up on, above the high school gym. Here's another one of our, our exciting projects that we have going on. Our high school auditorium is under complete renovation. This is our multicolor seats and the original look, and then here's where we're at today. So basically, we're at, the demo is done, we've put in the footings, the picture on the bottom right is the footings for where our ADA accessible elevator lift to get back and forth to the, not only the lower level down there, but also the stage, stage floor, as well as all of our seats and demolition of walls on the upper side of the, on the above in the auditorium are being modified. So this is a work in progress, we expect this to be done mid-October. It won't be done when school starts, but we're, we're, we're on track here. Again, this is our fire, if you were out around the schools in the last two weeks, you would have seen that we had a lot of excavation work going on around the middle school and around 61st Street. That was related to hooking into the main that was on the middle school side of 61st, so we were hooking in the fire main to go back to the high school, but as part of that process, so we only opened that up once, we hooked into the middle school, we hooked the middle school main up in preparation for our 2017 project in regards to fire suppression. So on the space side, if you remember, we, we talked a lot about our, our elementaries and the capacities that we, and the capacity issues we had going on there, and if we flip forward, we had Phase Two of our additions as part of our referendum, and those are fully in process right now. We're ahead of schedule. We had a very mild spring, which was positive for all. The frost came out of the ground in March, which allowed us to get rolling much sooner in this process than we did the last go-around. The last go-around, we had one of those winters where it was still, I think the ice is, the ice was still frozen in May, and people were worried about getting out for opening and fishing, but this year, we were able to get started in April, get rolling early, and we have our additions, all the walls, everything's up and functional, and we hope to be in there on schedule when we start school in the fall. So that's an overall update. As part of this process, we're, we're already refining our details for our 2017 projects. We're meeting on those as we roll forward. The vast amount of work that we'll see in the summer of '17 will take place at the middle school, so the middle school will be under construction, as well as some follow-up projects on Stevenson that we, we did at Hays this year. And then Phase Three is some follow-up items district-wide that will touch all buildings again in fiscal year '18, the summer of '18. Are there any questions in regards to that? It's an exciting time. We have a lot of work going on, and there'll be a, a lot to see when we get to open up school here September of, September 7th or 8th, day after Labor Day.
Is the security, are the security additions at the high school taking place this year, or is that?
No, those are, those are on tap for third year, third phase, summer of '18. We'll come back and do some modifications, which is why you don't see a lot of work going on in that main entry right now.
We are doing a slight modification in the main entry, there is some locking that is going on there, so there's a little bit of that, but, and the cameras are another upgrade that is happening at the high school for this year. So, part of it is, but when, if you were referring to the front entrance, that, that's will be '18, summer of '18.
Very exciting to see it in action.
All right, thank you. Next up, we have our business action item, so you don't want to run too far, Matt. Beginning with our first is a resolution adopting the 10-year long-term facility maintenance plan.
So we talked about this plan at the work session. This is our annual long-term facilities plan, which historically was a health and safety plan prior to this last, ooh, last fiscal year. As part of this plan, we're, we are going to put forth in front of you the approval of the 10-year long-term facilities plan that we'll come back and review again in September when the levy certification comes out from MDE.
Move the resolution.
Second.
I have a motion by Sampson, seconded by Prowedo, to adopt the 10-year long-term facility maintenance plan. Any further discussion? Not? Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Ms. Delvo?
Aye.
Ms. Luthbry?
Aye.
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 Ms. Sampson?
Aye.
Ms. Serbal?
Aye.
And the resolution passes. Thank you, Matt. Next would be a resolution accepting gifts. This is a monthly thing where we're fortunate enough to have folks donate to the school district, and this month, we had a donation for Brian Green for the FHS robotics team in the amount of $3,000. Do I have a motion to accept the gifts and thank the donors for their contributions?
Move to accept.
Second.
I have a motion by Delvo, seconded by Stewart-Event, to accept the gifts and thank the donors for their contributions. Any further discussion? If not, again, a resolution, so clerk, please call the roll.
Ms. Delvo?
Aye.
Ms. Luthbry?
Aye.
Ms. Rado?
Aye.
Ms. Sampson? Aye.
Ms. Serbal?
Aye.
And the resolution passes. Our next resolution on the agenda is the renewal of our annual membership with the Minnesota State High School League.
Yeah, in front of you is this document, which is a resolution that we also need to pass. Understanding that we will pass the resolution tonight, and we will complete our assignments at our next board meeting when we will have Dan Roth here to go through why we play.
Um, this is a motion?
This is a resolution.
It's a motion to move the resolution.
Move the resolution.
Second.
We have a motion then by Sampson, seconded by Prowedo, to approve the resolution approving the 2016-2017 membership in the Minnesota State High School League. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Clerk, please call the roll.
Ms. Delvo?
Aye.
Ms. Luthbry?
Aye.
Ms. Rado?
Aye.
Ms. Sampson?
Aye.
Ms. Serbal? Aye.
And the resolution passes. Next item, now we move on to a motion for the second reading and adoption of Policy 799 Nutritional Services Meal Charge.
Yeah, so tonight, we have Policy 799 Nutritional Services Meal Charge in front of you. There are no changes from the first reading, so we submit Policy 799 for your approval.
All right, thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the second reading?
Move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion by Lynn Blad, seconded by Delvo, to accept the second reading and adoption of Policy 799 Nutritional Services Meal Charge. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the motion passes. And our final motioned item for this evening would be the rate for the 2016-2017 private transportation contracts.
So tonight, we have our, our rate for our 2016-17 rate for private contract, or private transportation contracts. State statute requires school districts to transport students attending non-public schools to either the boundary or to the in-district non-public school. Per district policy, our rate is established annually, and we're putting forth our annual maximum dollar amount of $255.05 per family, per school for the 2016-17 school year.
Move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion by Sampson, seconded by Prowedo, to accept the rate for the 2016-2017 private transportation contracts. One note that you had mentioned in our work session was that one difference from this year to the previous policy is that we are doing this as a per-family basis, not on a per-student basis, so.
Yes, that is correct.
Certain people be aware of that. That, is there any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the motion passes. Next item up on the agenda is the consent agenda, which includes the minutes of the school board business meeting and work session that was held June 21st, 2016, the monthly financial reports, new contracts, amendments, leaves of absences, terminations, resignations, and retirements, an agreement to provide special education and related services from Northeast Metro 916, a athletic cooperative for the 2016, which include girls swimming with Tassino Grace, girls gymnastics with ASIO, boys hockey with Irndale, and girls hockey with the North Metro All-Stars. And another item on the consent agenda also includes the MDE National School Lunch Program Equipment Grant of $18,765. Do we have any discussion along those items? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So, motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion by Prowedo and seconded by Delvo to approve the consent agenda of the routine action items that I have mentioned. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the motion passes. Now we have written information, and we have first reading of four policies. Starting first one, I believe, was with regard to fund balance, Mr. Hammer.
Yeah, so, tonight, we're presenting our first reading of Policy 798, which is our fund balance policy for the district. We are proposing to make modifications to our fund balance policy, moving our fund balance policy from a 5% to 8% of unassigned expenditures to a 7% to 10% of unassigned expenditures, as well as make some modifications to the language around monthly review to an annual approval, or annual review of our assignments. So tonight, we have a first reading, and up for questions.
All right. And these will be all, these new will also be on our website, coming up posted.
Once they.
Once they become, once, okay, so it's even before they're approved, okay. Thank you. The next policy is Policy 608 Instructional Services Special Education. Laura.
Good evening. So tonight, we bring forth for the first reading Policy 608 Instructional Services for Special Ed, and the reason we bring this policy. for Special Ed, and the reason we bring this policy forward is because we just had our IB evaluation process, and the piece that was added to this policy was just ensuring that every time we go through that IB process, we make sure that we look at our Special Ed Policy 608.
Thank you. Unless there's any further discussion on that one, we'll move to policy, two new policies with regards to some communications, Policy 215, which is the school board public participation, and Policy 997 Communications and Community Relations. Jael.
Good evening. Policy 215 for school board public participation presented to you for first reading. The school board recognizes the value of public engagement and participation to support student achievement and school effectiveness. The board is committed to having clearly defined goals for the public to understand how and to what extent the public participation is needed. The policy articulates those definitions and participation in terms of communications in five components, which is to inform, to consult, to involve, to collaborate, and to empower the community in aspects of decision-making. This is submitted to you for first reading. Policy 997, which follows that, is communications and community engagement policy. This is not a new policy, but it has been modified to, in the past, this policy included the board communication and participation work, which has been lifted and transferred to Policy 215. So, the only changes here will be in Section Four and Section Five, which have been removed, and the language in Section Five, which has been changed from board community engagement to board public engagement to correspond to Policy 215.
Right, thank you. Our next item on the agenda would be moving forward to important future school board dates. That would be our next Fridley Public School Board meeting, to be held on August 16th, 2016. The work session probably will begin, I think we talked about, around 5:15, be generally taking place at the high school, assuming we can actually get in there to take a tour of the buildings. If not, we will have it here at our regular 5:30 time in City Hall Conference Room A. The open forum will still try to have at the high school at 7:00 PM, and then we will follow that with the business meeting here in the city council chambers at 7:30.
I may add also, the MSBA Annual Conference is August 7th and 8th. That is, I believe, I believe that's Monday, Tuesday of that week. It's in your work session packet, I didn't get a chance to talk to you about it, but I believe Jael will be attending it, and the conversation and the information is going to be centered around framing the equity conversations. So, if you are able to attend, please let Lori know, and she will make sure that every registration is appropriate.
Thank you. If there's no other additional items, I would certainly entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
I have a motion by Lynn Blad, seconded by Sturtavant, to adjourn the meeting. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the motion, or the motion carries, so they are adjourned at 8:06. Thank you.